Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to call to order the city council for the FYI 2026 budget hearings for Monday, June 23rd at 6:15 this evening. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Wagner? Ariaga?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Goff?
Here.
Balakir?
Here.
Crampits?
Here.
Shamsky? Korsane? Labrie?
Here.
Piniac Costello?
Thank you. Participating on Zoom this evening, we have Consular Brooks. Consular Kushein was not able to make it to budget hearing. He is out of town this evening. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chickaby is broadcasting live and for future broadcasts, this meeting on Chickaby TV. Is anyone in the audience or on Zoom video or autotaping this meeting? Seeing none, we will move in now move into public input. Public input is limited to three minutes or less. If anybody want to come to the mic for public, you're welcome to do that. And while she's on her way up, if everybody could just mute your cell phone, it'd be appreciated for the meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Lucy, Bean Avenue, 34 Everett Street. I'm glad you're allowing public input at the budget hearings this year because in the past you have not. So I am really thrilled that you're doing that. One thing that's, it really isn't under the control of the council. But I know I did listen to the mayor yesterday on the day with Dave Mattson, who said that the council had the full budget on earlier in June to look at this at the beginning of June, which I know you didn't have the full budget because the school department, which is a large part of the budget, was not finalized until last week. So that was a disingenuous comment as far as I'm concerned because the school department is such a large part of the budget. And I feel like it's a disservice to this council that you are not getting budget information earlier than the beginning of June. And especially in these times where finances are paramount to everybody. Because everyone is thinking about it, how much everything is going up, how much everything could be going up. And people who work for this city who are concerned that their salaries are not enough to pay for their expenses. So everything has to be looked at, and I really wish you were getting it sooner. Um, I work for a private company. They start budgeting for the next year 11 months in advance. This isn't something that that goes into place right at the end of the end of the year. This is something that's looked at, expenses, loss ratios, everything is looked at early on and adjustments are made. You guys are strapped not to be able to do that for this to go so late in the year. You should be looking at expenses at all of the expenditures. I know Consular Wagner asked that that be done on a monthly basis, and it's not being done. That's something that should be talked about, where all of the money is going and that it's used to the best of its abilities for all of these departments that are here, that are serving the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input? Welcome.
Okay. Uh, Sunimchik 362, James Street. Yes, I'll be counting down for you today, Frank, 3, 2, 1.
Well, we got it right here for you.
Okay, that's fine. I'm in agreement with, I believe, Lisa. Okay. I've been self-employed since 19, oh gosh, 1983. Okay. And it gets crowded in my business. It's me, my eye. And I'm accountable at all levels. And I don't wait for the end of the year to push something through. But to keep it earmarked, I create a system even just by myself that makes it easy. Just snap into place where I can identify anything. And here you are, 13, unlucky number unless you put forth, like Tim said, and Lisa reiterated, how about something on a monthly basis? To be ahead of it, so there could be discussion for direction for future, to be ahead of the game. Okay. And today I was coming in, I noticed right away, guess what? Gas just increased 20 cents a gallon. And in this heat dome, that's what I said to Gary coming in, it's like a sauna out there. It's going to be even worse tomorrow. And what's going to happen is if we don't get on top of even our famous golf park, because the pro always said this, the constant in the golf park is wear, tear, and replacement. Well, if you're used to an observing climate or weather, let's call it weather, whether it gets worse or whether it gets whatever. If it's going to be a drought, what impact does that have on the greens and the cost? If it's going to be micro bursts like we've experienced this past week, you look outside, it's fine. One second later, it is just sheer downpour. What's the cost to the greens? And on days like this, are you going to even have golfers out there playing golf? And I remember mom, she's British when she was alive, okay? And she said only mad dogs and Englishmen go out in midday sun. So I don't expect any golfer out there. So it'll affect income coming in. So if it's that's paramount to individual departments, you as the council need to be involved so that one, you can involve the public with input and insight, data to be ahead of the game, questions, really hard questions, so we can have a better, better, best Chickaby. And I know some of you are eager and that you have the intelligence for it. Do you have the drive and the duty for service to the Chickaby residents? 3, 2, 1, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public input in the audience?
Uh, Michael P. 33 Bonneville Avenue. I am the Chief of Staff to the mayor, and I just want to correct one point. The school committee sets the school budget, not the city council. What the school council and the mayor do is they set the dollar amount of what the schools can spend. That dollar amount was determined back in June. And when that dollar amount was determined and the mayor decided not to increase the school budget beyond that school spending, the budget was prepared and delivered to all the city councillors in June and was posted on the auditor's website in June. So I just want to clear up that one fact. And I know, working as the Chief of Staff to the mayor, that the city councillors give us a lot of questions and give us a lot of comments about the budget. So we do appreciate all the input we've gotten so far. And I wish you luck reviewing the budget and going through the budget tonight. And if you do have any other additional questions or issues, please let the mayor's office know. We'll be glad to assist you. And I also wanted to thank the auditor and her staff for all the work they put into this budget. It was a very difficult budget, as you all know. And we hope that this will move the city forward in a fair and equitable manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom for public input? Is there anyone on Zoom for public input? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close public input. Motion made, second to close public input. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner? Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to now start with our FY 26 budget. I just want to put a couple guidelines in place for tonight's meeting. The budget hearing is about the budget and the budget only. It is not to be discussed about what's going on in a park or DPW. It is only about the budget. That's what it was advertised at, and that's all we can discuss. We cannot discuss any other items but the budget. I will be monitoring it, and if I feel I need to stop it, I'm going to do that. And please respect, the departments are coming in here. If someone's asked a question once, it doesn't need to be said a second time. So with that said, we are now going to start with them. Um, I'm going to start with the registrar, page 35. I'll put a mic there. Could you make sure the mic is on when you're there, please?
Sure.
We'll listen to their whole budget, and if you just raise your hand, we'll go around the room once. A second time if someone has a second questions later. We're going to go in that order. I'll be monitoring. Thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you, councillors. Good evening. This is Barbara Galindo from the registrar voter's office. We're going to start with the salaries. It's pretty contractual, so it's a contract. So then we're going to jump right into the expenditures. So everything's pretty much the same except for printing and binding. I had to increase it due to the increase of the envelopes and and then the additional work that we had to do in the office for mailing everything. So we had to add on some more of addition to that. Everything else remains the same.
Thank you. Any questions from the floor? Contra Balakir?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your hard work. Couple of quick questions, ma'am. Overtime, it looks like in 2025, you're at 15,000.
Yep.
And and now it looks like you've gone to 10,000, which is good. Is that going to be adequate?
Uh, yes, yep.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had was on page 36, line item regarding special services. It looks like you had in 2025, you had a figure of 5,000. Then you had a request of 30,000, but then it went back to 5,000. Again, is that going to be adequate? And what are your special services, please? What does that comprise?
Special services, what we use for census. And then we have advertising on the passports. So it comes off the passport services.
Okay, thank you. So so this figure now of 5,000 for that line item, that's that should?
Remains the same, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All set, Mr. President?
Thank you. Any other questions from the floor? Contra Goff? Could you put your mic on?
All right. Um, you said special services was for census, but on and you have a register and census taker under line item 514605. It's for $4,560. You did not fill that position last year because?
Um, yeah, we didn't fill it out because there was, there was no interest. So we put out now a job posting out there. We had quite a few interviews. Unfortunately, it fell apart. So we're going to try again for next year, and we're going to start earlier. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I have a question. So what you're saying about Consular Goff is that you're you're going to fill that position?
Yes, yeah, which we're going to start earlier in the in the year, yes.
I can understand because we in our office voted to have a part-time person, and we had only one person show for it, and it's still not filled. So we actually pulled it back for now. But that's a problem throughout the whole city is trying to keep it in the budget because you want to fill a position. Well, it's a DP double or your staff or anyone else. So I'm in favor of leaving it there because I know that these positions are needed.
Right. It's like a seasonal thing, you know? It's only a short period of time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor?
I just want to thank.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
I want to thank the registrar for all her hard work. Every time you go down there, she's very polite. It's a great staff. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Motion intently approved. Hold on, hold on, please. I meant to say one thing here. On behalf of the whole city council, so we thank everybody that comes comes out tonight to do their budgets and the hard work everybody does. So we don't have to go around on thank you, thank you, thank. We all do it on behalf of the whole city council so we can continue with the meeting. Okay? So thank you for your service, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion intently approved.
Motion made, second intently approved. Roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Thank you for coming tonight. We will now move into Building Department, page 55.
Good evening, councillors. Um, the building department's budget basically.
Just make sure the mic is close to here. Frank, you can make sure the mic is close to you. Can you hear me? That's better. If you could pull it to you a little bit.
Yeah, the building department's budget basically is just like it was last year. There really is no changes on anything. Um, we still got two open building inspectors position where that we have posted for employment, and we're still working on that. And I think everything stayed the same with our expenses that the building department needs to keep the building department running. If there's any questions, I can answer any questions.
You're all set? That's one page long? How about your your clerk, your part-time? Okay. Contra Labrie, then Contra Costello will be second.
Are all your inspectors and employees filled here on this on this page?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are all your positions filled?
No, I still have two open building inspector positions that we're working on.
But they're out posted and everything?
I believe one's posted right now. Um, we're having trouble filling that position, so we just posted one so far. And we're going to see how that goes. I've been thinking about maybe taking one of them positions and cutting it in half. They try to get a part-time guy just to get someone to apply. So I'm still in the thought of probably trying to make that happen.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Contra Costello?
Yes, how um, how how long have these positions been open?
Sad to say, it's about two years now.
Two years?
Two years, yes.
So for two years, Frank, you've been going too short for the inspector?
Yeah, yeah, it's um, it's it's tough. I'm not getting qualified people to apply for the job. And when you become a building inspector, you got to have certain qualifications. You got to experience in the building industry. So it just can't, anybody can't just apply for the job. So it's kind of a uphill battle to get someone that's qualified for the position.
Well, thanks. Thanks for accommodating all of us. Because you're two, two people short. That's tough.
Yep.
Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Contra Goff, then Contra Balakir, and then Sam.
I have a couple of questions. You have a clerk's position and a part-time clerk's position, and it looks like neither one were filled last year. Did you, it looks like you merged them this year.
Yeah, so we merged our part-time clerk that we had, and we put that into a full-time position, and we just filled that position. Um, so and she just started today. So that's that's a good help for the building department to help us with our paperwork and get done things that we need to get done.
And also line item 585208, departmental equipment. You have 2,000. Um, it's an increase of 1,000 from last year? Or no, I'm sorry. It's the same, but um, none of that expense was expended last year either.
Okay. And what was it, which one was that?
585208.
Five, eight. Okay, the department equipment?
Yep.
Correct, yeah. We uh, that's if we need any office furniture or anything like that. I don't think we even really spent any of that last year. I don't know if that was, that was tough. So we just keep that the same. I mean, that's something I could probably adjust because I don't know if I need that 2 grand for that. But it's, I think it's been there for a little bit for last few years, so we just left it alone.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Consular Balakir?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Frank. Just clarification. Uh, on building special accounts, emergency demo, emergency security, 2025, it was 50,000. Then you had requests for 75,000. Then you went back to 50. Is again, is that figure going to be adequate, the 50, or do we need to change that to 75?
Yeah, so I did try to increase that to 75. Um, so as you all know, I mean, these last few years that I've been dealing with some of the buildings that we need to take care of by the building code and by mass general law. But I think right now we have a good handle on it, and I think the 50 will be fine enough for us to get through this year to see how things go. And I'll just have to be a little bit more diligent in how I spend the money. But I think the 50 will work. And if it comes that I need some more, I might have to come in front of council to ask for some more, but.
All right, thanks. No, I just, I just want a clarification and make sure that we're going to be okay if if we need be. All right, all set. Thanks.
Contra Shamsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you mentioned how you're struggling to find two additional building inspectors. Have you looked into possibly paid training or on-the-job training for enticement offers? Um, what either, I don't know if any of these line items could be used for, say, license training or qualifications?
Yeah, that's, that would be great. Um, I think what's happening here and is, um, you know, the surrounding communities that we that we live around, um, you know, their rates are a little bit more towards more attractive to to get to fill them positions. Um, I mean, Holyoke just hired two guys within a month, and they were both already certified. And that could have been, you know, no one applied Chickaby for that job.
So it's a lack for, a lack of salary?
I think it's a lack of salary for income, um, you know? And forget the education and they got to get certification and all that. So I'm hoping to try to, you know, work moving forward to try to see if them salaries will be adjusted moving forward this coming year.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Contra Ariaga?
Um, I'm just looking at books and records, line 558300. You went from 6 down to 2,000. Um, I just want to make sure that that's going to be okay because that's just kind of a big drop, which I appreciate you saving money there, but is that going to be feasible?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be feasible.
Okay.
Yep.
You all set? Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Motion intently approved.
Motion made, second intently approved, the building inspector in the department's budget. Roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
And intently approved. Uh, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
We'll now move into the Police Department, page 42. Thank you for coming.
So overall, uh, there was increases contractual, payroll increases for the police salaries. Above and beyond that, most of our budget was level funded from last, uh, last year. We did have some increases. The repair to radio equipment went up by $2,400, and that's to cover the cost of radio over internet. Our telephone budget increased $3,444. That was to purchase additional cell phones, cell phone lines for three new civilian positions and laptops for new cruisers and for one new SRO. Our special services account raised by $75,408. That's to cover C3 rent increase and the addition of the Communication Public Relations Service. Computer software, which, you know, our appropriation last year was a large increase, $696,238 is the Axon service package for our our new tasers, our crime scene software, and membership fees for professional organizations for myself, for captains and other members of the department. Those memberships, some have increased the fees and others we have added new members into those organizations. There's also a slight increase funding for the purchase of cruisers effective July 2025. The lease for the three vehicles that we're currently leasing is increasing by $75 per vehicle per month. Additionally, I'm looking to lease two motorcycles. The motorcycles, as you're aware, we currently purchase. Uh, and after a while, maybe five, six years, they start to break down and they start, becomes not cost-effective to maintain them. By leasing them, the the cost of that will be 13,088 per year, and that will cover replacement bikes if needed. They'll allow us to utilize training bikes, the Harley-Davidsons. And um, I think it's going to be cost-effective in the long run for the city. Overall, I'd like to to thank the council for your continued support for the the programs they're introducing at the Police Department. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them right now.
Thank you. Contra Shamsky first?
Thank you, chief. So I noticed for your Westcom expenditures, it was 614 last year, and now it's 948. Can you elaborate on that as to the increases because of the new building or?
The the Westcom agreement, I believe it started out, uh, it was incremental where our cost share would be, I believe, 25%. I can verify for you what it started off at and what percentage we're responsible for. But it's gone up the last couple of years where our percentage of responsibility has changed to to fund that position.
Okay, and I also noticed in patrolmen step two, last year it was 1.7 million, now it's only 963,000. Is that, is that because of increased salary steps or the new contract negotiation from that?
That probably depends on the, the the number of patrolmen we have in that specific step. As we add people in, some of the people we've added have come in from other departments. So they'll go up to a higher level step rather than starting at the bottom. So depending on how many new recruits we get in, that will affect those steps.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll go with Contra. Contra Balakir?
All right, yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks, chief. A question for you, please. On page 45, we have something, a line item called incentive. Is this still part of the Quinn education bill? Is that?
That is the education incentive. That's correct, sir.
Okay, um, are are we still involved with the Quinn bill? Or is that something that's that's pretty much gone for the city and that's just a state?
It's not necessarily the the Quinn bill as it was originally anymore. But as part of the the recent contracts, we base the incentive off half the former Quinn bill incentive.
Okay, because uh, it looks like it's gone, projection is like 278,000 more for for this year, for fiscal year 2026 versus 2025. So um, I just wanted just some clarification. So you, so we still have that in in effect?
Yes, we we changed the the prior education incentive after the original Quinn bill went down to a straight dollar amount. So say for an associate's degree, you would get $2,000. 1,000 for an associate's, excuse me, 2,000 for a bachelor's and five for a master's. And during contract negotiations, that was changed to go off half the former Quinn bill, which are percentage-based.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Contra Costello?
Thanks. Thank you, uh, chief, for all your hard work. Are you down any police officers? Are you now up to the full capacity?
We're, we're not at full capacity. We've done tremendous effort the last couple of years, as you're aware, where we were down into maybe the low 90s. We're currently at 112 patrolmen. Uh, we're looking at getting more additional officers. We're not going to put any into the academy in July. But we do have a couple of prospects through the new civil service hiring program. Well, they let, they allow you to get 50% outside of civil service, which has kind of bogged us down as far as getting new people in the last few years. So we're hoping we've already gotten two outside civil service. We're looking at a third coming in, and these are trained people, been to the academy. So we won't have to incur the academy training costs for them. But it's, uh, it's going to help us get up to close to full meaning, and we're looking to put some more people in in the December academy as well.
That's great, chief. What's your, um, what's the full enrollment for patrolmen? What's the number, 120?
120.
Okay, great, you're close.
We're yeah.
Hey, great work. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm my first time. So chief, what, on page 43, intern? What does an intern do for the Police Department?
Interns are are. Interns are, are college interns that come in to assist with the, the training department. And we obliged to, to pay them for their time.
Thank you. And then uh you, you spoke about the C-three uh lease. Is that a one-year lease uh in the budget for this year?
Yes.
For the full year?
Yes.
Did, how much did that go up?
Ten percent, I believe.
Also, uh, one other question, and then I think I have already answered on page uh forty-six. You went from a hundred and thirty, uh, a hundred and thirty-six thousand to nine hundred and eighty-three for computer software. Is that, is with all the new process, the equipment we just uh approved for the sit, for the police department, the cameras um in the um?
That's some of it may be related to that, but on, on top of that, we have other software, investigative software that the detective bureau uses. Believe it was Accurant is included in that. What's that? Oh, that's separate? Oh, okay. That's, that's for, yes, it is.
It's for that program too. That's what I thought it was. Okay, Counselor Shamsky, second time.
Thank you. I have a question, Chief. What is witness fees? I see it's seventy-five thousand dollars last year and this year, but I wanted, I was curious if you can give us some more elaboration as to what that is.
When is he, that's for when officers uh have to go to court to testify.
Okay.
That's the account that that's used to pay.
And that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Goff?
Line five, one, four, three, five, zero, the overtime. Um, I'm hoping with um, when you get a full complement of officers, that will go down a bit.
I would hope so too. Uh, we're, we're fortunate that uh, the overtime that we've expended over the last couple of years, we, we've had the opportunity to, to use some of our unused salary funds to offset the um balance of the overtime. So I'll, I'll definitely look into it. And if we can streamline when we get to that level, which I'm hoping we can, we will.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments, questions from Zoom? See, none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve the police department budget.
Motion intently approve the police.
Motion made second to tenderly approve the police department's budget. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamski?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, thank you. And the, the police department is tenderly approved. We'll move on to the law department, page twenty-five.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Kevin Cord and City Solicitor. I don't really have any big changes in, in my department's budget. It's pretty standard from year to year. This year, we made some changes to staff positions, but uh kept the salary budget relatively the same. Um, with the help of the auditing department, I, we were able to identify about thousand dollars in the printing line item that we don't need any longer, so we reduced the budget by that amount. Um, and as I've said before in this, in front of this council, it's my goal every year. And since I took over this position to uh not have to come back to you folks for additional funds for the special services account and for, this will be the third year now, I think, where we've managed to uh use the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars um adequately. And we have not had to come back this year for any additional funds for that line item, with the exception of uh some settlements that we've asked for, which I don't really include in that effort. Um, and that's about it. And I would take any questions.
Counselor Costello?
Um, thank you, um, Counselor Gordon, for all your hard work. Um, I appreciate it. It's not easy being city solicitor, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. But um, the, the, the item of the special service account is two hundred and fifty thousand. So you, you mentioned that it was settlements. Would that be hiring also special people for litigation?
Generally, we take, um, we use special services for hiring outside counsel for any specialties that uh staff attorneys don't have competencies in. An example of that would be dealing with unaroyal property. We have an attorney that's been working on that property for some time. Uh, we've managed to manage that expenditure over the past couple of years. And hopefully, we're weaning ourselves off of that representation as well. But generally, it's for outside counsel. Uh, in the event that a city counselor or another uh employee might have a conflict, we may not be able to represent them in-house. Uh, other specialties um that we might require, like collective bargaining or any employment issues that are a little bit more complex. And just for the purposes of no appearance of conflict, there are at times a need to hire outside counsel for that purpose. We do use that account for other expenditures as well, as well as they come up. Uh, for instance, hiring of experts uh for a trial or, or other things of that nature.
Well, thank you. And you're keeping that budget practically the same every year. It's gone for.
That's my goal, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any questions from Counselor Goff?
Um, line item six, nine, nine, zero, zero, five, uh, mobile home rent control. I know it's minimum, but I'm just wondering what that is.
So um, for some reason, our staff, staffs the mobile home rent control board. And so they have expenses uh for whatever the mobile home rent control board needs, copying. Uh, there, there is a, a nominal fee for that staff person to attend those meetings, so it comes out of that line item. It's uh not fully complimented. We haven't had a meeting in a long time, but I expect at some point soon, we'll have some business to attend to uh for that board. Um, I, I would like to move that, that, that board out of my office, but uh that's what's been inherited and I, I don't wanna rock the boat too much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Any questions from Zoom? See, none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve the law department.
Motion to approve the law department.
Motion made second that we tenderly approve the law department's budget. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you.
Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamski?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Very bad?
Yes, I said yes.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Yeah.
I listened to it to make sure less. Thank you. And so the law department is tenderly approved. We're all set. We'll go now, page forty-nine, the fire department.
Good evening, everyone. How are we doing? Any, most of the increases that we have this year are contractual obligations related to salary. Um, you'll see an increase in the overtime from last year of fifty thousand dollars. And that's, those are really the only changes, salary and the overtime budget. And I'd be glad to entertain any questions regarding either one of them.
Counselor Labrie?
Yes. Hey, hey, Chief, uh, on the uh positions, the, the number of uh firemen we have, uh, is that number also about one-ten or one, one-twenty?
For, for amount of firefighters?
Yeah.
One forty-three is our, our full complement. We're down.
Without officers, though. Without the officers.
Without the.
Yeah, it's just, just the firefighters. Um, so I remember we had increased that when we opened Station Seven.
Yeah, I, I don't uh have a quick answer for you, but uh in general, we're down ten firefighters currently.
We're still down ten. Yeah, that was my, yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah. And uh, we're in the process of uh, we set out to hire eight. And as you know, that's kind of a, a long, arduous process right now. That eight turned into five. Uh, we're getting closer. A couple of uh physical agility tests scheduled next week. And we're hoping to swear, hopefully, five in uh within two weeks, so.
Yeah, I just don't want it to go into a situation where it went into, you know, fifteen years ago or, you know, twelve, fifteen years ago when they were closing a station here and there. So I, I wanna make sure they all stay open.
I, I agree. I don't ever wanna see that again either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Balakir?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, Chief, uh, question regarding the overtime. Would you say that's attributable because of personnel staffing? If you could home in on that, please?
Yeah, ac- actually, there, there's quite a bit uh revolving around that. Um, you, you know, if you take that initial figure of one point seven five, which is a tremendous amount of money for the taxpayers, but you gotta keep in mind, uh, unused salaries, uh, this year, we're expected to turn back eight hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, that amount could come off of that. Uh, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars of that uh pay for the impact ambulances. So there are two of them. So uh, the hope is that most of that, if not more than that, amount for the impact uh portion of that overtime is recouped through ambulance billing. Uh, and then there's forty-one thousand dollars in there for our state hazmat team. And we receive a hundred percent reimbursement from the state that initially comes out of our overtime budget. So effectively, uh, the net overtime cost is about five hundred and seventy-two thousand. Um, and that is, um, there's a lot of things to go into that as well. Uh, number one, FMLA, there's a, a tremendous amount of, of use of that, you know, via the federal law. Uh, so we have to backfill for those positions. There's military deployments, there's personal sick, there's injured on duty. Um, and uh, you know, Nero's training, which was an unfunded mandate that we had to address uh on the EMS side. Um, uh, you know, active shooter training, which is, is um become a hot button. And, and we're trying to stay ahead of that and, and uh, you know, that requires backfill as well. So those are um, the, the big numbers in, in the majority of it there. I hope that helps with the explanation.
Okay, uh, thank you. And as, as a follow-up question, um, the ambulance billing system. Um, it looks like uh in two years, that's gone up twenty-five thousand. It went up uh from twenty twenty-four, it was a hundred and ten. Now it's earmarked for a hundred and thirty-five. Can you shed any light on that system, please?
Yes, um, so the way the ambulance billing company operates is they charge you uh per billable run. So uh, with the two impact ambulances that we put on the street, um, we are picking up that many more medical calls. Therefore, that billing company is charging us more. Um, so, you know, we recruit more, but they're also charging more for their service. Um, our ambulance call, the rough number, but last year, we uh did ten thousand ambulance calls and uh five thousand truck, uh truck calls for a combination of fifteen thousand. But as far as the transports, that's directly related to how our ambulance company contract works, billing company.
Alright, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Shamski?
Thank you. I have a question, Chief. What is out of rank pay? I see a hundred thousand dollars. It's stayed um stable for the last few years. I just wanted.
I, I couldn't hear the first part.
Out of rank pay? I have a question as to what exactly that line, line item was.
So uh, out of rank is something uh that was established long before I was in place, but it's a, it's a dual-part uh system. Essentially, if a um deputy chief, a captain or a lieutenant is out, the next senior member bumps up to that responsibility role, whether it's for vacation coverage, uh sick coverage, so on and so forth, FMLA. Uh, so we try and strike a balance between the most experienced person to get into that role and do a safe job uh without paying full pay to somebody to do that position.
Okay. Okay, and the other thing I noticed was the education stipend. It went from a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. I know it's twenty thousand dollars, but I just was kinda curious as.
So it dropped a thousand? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Um, so the education stipend, um, there are two, well, which, which line are you on?
It is five, it's about page fifty, the last one, five, one, nine, seven, four, zero.
Are you saying it's the last one?
Yes, it's five, one, nine, seven, four, zero on page fifty.
Okay, I think, oh, I got two different uh sheets here. Yeah, my numbering system must be different, but there's two different ways that um firefighters are compensated for education. Uh, one of them is uh, they have educational classes they take at the uh Mass State Fire Academy. They're billed out one dollar per class. They have to go to a certain length of class. And then it's a, a weekly stipend, so to speak. And the other um educational incentive they have uh is we have various teams. For example, critical incident stress management, where they have to maintain hours. We have a mer team, uh medical emergency response team. In addition to that, we have um, the hazmat team and, and these other various teams. So they're, they're also given educational benefits for that. If it went down, my guess is that maybe one of the employees that was receiving a stipend uh retired, cuz we had a couple retirements this year, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from on Zoom? See, none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve.
Motion intently approved.
Motion made in second to tenderly approve the fire department's budget. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamski?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
And the fire department is tenderly approved. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you all.
We'll go to page uh EPW, page one oh one.
Can I ask, um, since Ben is here, can we?
Okay, we have, we'll take, um, okay. I'll take a motion for someone to take one twelve out of order.
Motion to take one twelve.
Motion made in second to take item number one twelve, uh Parks out of order. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamski?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Uh, just for the information, uh Parks Department, City Consular, uh, Sam Shamski will not be discussing anything. His mother works for the Parks Department. Go ahead with the Parks Department.
Um, for our salaries, uh, most of the increases are contractual. Um, we did bump up our overtime line item, ten thousand dollars. Um, just to equate for the increases that the salaries have been getting. And a lot of the extra work our staff has been doing um for events, sports games, stuff like that. Um, as for our expenses, we kept it uh very similar to last year. However, we did do, uh, put in an, an increase for playground equipment with the intention of replacing the safety servicing under a number of playgrounds throughout the city. Um, we're required um to maintain um the safety servicing under the playgrounds um to provide fall protection. Um, and that needs to be done with a special um engineered wood fiber um to provide that certain cushioning. So um, the goal is to replace that throughout a number of playgrounds throughout the city. And then we also had an increase to our memberships line item. Uh, just a couple of the rates for those have been increasing over the last couple of years. And then we also increased our portable toilets line item um from ten thousand to twenty thousand. Um, the increase in the number of portable toilets we have across the city, um, especially for events, and our rate has gone up over the last uh couple of years, so. Yes, and then also for Zot Park, um, now that the stadium is shut down, we do have extra porta potties available at Zot Park as well, so.
Thank you. Any questions from Counselor Labrie then Counselor Costello?
Yeah, I, I've been, uh, special services, uh, I think we talked about that last year. Uh, did you spend most of that six thousand last year?
Yes.
And was that like to fix uh things that our guys couldn't fix, uh?
Um, we use it for a variety of number of things. I don't know if you remember, last year, we had to have a exterminator come in at the post-nine-eleven um park because there was termites, so taking care of things like that, uh, cer- um, certain work that has to be outsourced outside of the expertise of our department.
Like if a pump that, you know, somebody couldn't put in or a switch or something, that you would use that account also?
Yeah, we had to have the pumps repaired at Ray. Yeah, we had to have the pumps repaired at Ray Ash a couple of years ago. So that was something we had, we had done with that. So any of those specialty type things that are outside of the expertise of our, of our department.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Consor Costello.
Thanks. Are you short any employees in your department?
Yes.
How many?
I believe five at this moment.
I'm sorry?
Five.
Five? And how long have, has, has it been five people down in your department?
We've been down five people for the last couple of years now. That number is kind of varied between, I'd say between four to seven. It's kind of gone up and down, but right now it's at five.
So roughly the last several years, you're down on the average five people?
Yes, in my tenure here, we've never been fully staffed.
And just to provide some clarification, these positions are difficult to fill due to the CDL licensing requirement that's currently in the job.
Okay. And then your overtime, it was 40,000? And now it went up to 50,000? Or is that because of the lack of staff?
Yeah, it helps offset that, but also the increase, like I said, there's many more city events that we're helping out at. And then there's also a lot of sports league stuff that we need to tend to as well. So making sure we have adequate staffing to make sure all these things are taken into account.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be Consular Bellic here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think that question on overtime, I was looking for clarification as well, Ben. Trying to see if it was attributable, if it was because of not having enough personnel and/or if you were doing extra things. So I think you just kind of cleared that up for me. So thanks.
Thank you. Consor Goff.
Right under the overtime is temporary labor. Just 38,000, I think last year you only used 10% of that.
We try to fill these positions. We post them every year. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, we've only been able to fill one or two of them. But these staff are very important to us. They help offset some of the work that our regular laborers do during the summer seasonal months.
Do you need special licenses for those temporary?
No.
And they're still hard to fill?
These are just seasonal employees, so they're only there for a few months a year. And they assist with cleaning up at the beginning of the season with preparing parks and at the end of the season for cleaning up like leaves, leaf cleanup. We've been able, fortunately with Roka, we've been able to offset that by utilizing them. Probably like once a month, I think they go to parks for like a week.
Yeah, we kind of utilize Roka on and off when we need them. In the fall time, picking up leaves, I believe they're, they've been working with my staff this week preparing for fireworks. So we do.
Do you pay Roka?
We don't pay Roka. That comes out of the DPW budget.
And also line 571,000?
Sue, could you pull your mic to you over this? I can't hear you.
Not talking into it. 571,000 for travel?
Excuse me, if everybody could, make sure you pull the mics because the auditor's got to be able to hear for the comment she puts up. So please keep it close to you because she needs to write stuff down. Thank you.
571,000 for travel. You have $2,000 for travel?
Yep.
And you transferred that out? You didn't use that?
No, that is for attending the national conference. Last year, we didn't attend. I was actually out on paternity leave at that time of the conference. And as well as another one of my staff members was out. So we didn't end up attending it and unfortunately didn't use that line item last year.
And also the line item 558130, weather gear. You didn't use that?
No, we had just purchased foul weather gear for all of our staff right at the end of last fiscal year.
This is a contractual line item. It's in the UFCW contract that annually we have to make available funds for foul weather gear. So if we, we issue them an initial full suit, I would say. And then we maintain money in the line item in case we get new, new employees because we need to be able to supply them with that. Or if there's damages, you know, if they need new things, some departments, they might say, okay, the rain gear is great, but we need insulated pants during the winter, things like that. So we make that, that line item is important to be available every year in case there isn't a need for change or new staff need.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Page 114. Light on 4548103. Back in 2024, it was 5,000. Now we're at $50,000. I'm not complaining about it because I'm glad to see that because a lot of consulars in their wards, there's a lot of equipment that needs to be, playground equipment that needs to be fixed before someone gets hurt. So I'm glad it's not coming for extra money. You planned it in your budget to do it. So I'm glad to see that. It needs to be done in a lot of the ward areas. So thank you for that. I don't need to know where, but I'm glad that we're going to be repairing that stuff in order to be safety. Because some of it was safety issues. So any other comments? See, none. I'll take a motion to tentatively approve the DBW Parks Department only.
Motion tentatively approved.
Motion made second to approve the DBW Parks Department budget. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga? Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Shamsky? Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
And the motion passes to tentatively approve the Parks Department. Thank you for coming. We'll now move into DBW.
Can we, I'll also do recreation out of, sorry, that's a separate.
That's part of the parks. Okay, unfortunately, we have to do roll call because we're changing it off. So motion, I'll take.
Motion to take recreation 139.
Motion made second to take item number 139, recreation out of order. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Page 139, recreation. You have the floor.
For our salaries, the only increases were contractual for our full-time staff. All of our seasonal staff remain the same. And as for the recreation expenses, was level funded compared to last year.
Any questions from the floor? Consor Bellic here.
Yeah, thank you. Page 142, just some clarification, please. It says for fireworks, it says 20,000. Is this what the city side is responsible for? Because I know that we also get contributions from financial institutions, other businesses. So can you shed some light on that, please?
Yep. So this line item is also intentionally put there as a placeholder. As we do solicit for donations for the fireworks, sometimes that money doesn't roll in in time. We have certain bills we have to pay. And then other times, we may not be able to raise the amount of funds we need to cover the entire fireworks show. There's also other expenses that come along with the fireworks. We have to pay overtime to the police and fire departments and some other departments that assist us as well. We have to provide a security perimeter throughout Zot Park. So we have to rent special fencing, stuff like that. So it helps cover some of those other costs that come along with that event.
Okay, as a follow up, so there's 20,000. Handle that or are we, or does this seem like it's going to be more or?
Yeah, yeah, that typically handles that along with the donations that we receive as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the floor? Consor Costello.
Yes, thanks. I just have a question in regards to the recreation for travel. $1,200. What's the travel used for?
That is contractual through the UFCW contract for the admin staff. They are reimbursed for their travel between, when they're out on the road, if they're traveling between schools or parks for athletic events, they have to use their own vehicles. So they're, they're given mileage for that.
So it's like a mileage reimbursement thing?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? See, none. I'll take a motion to tentatively approve the recreation.
Motion tentatively approved.
Motion made second, we tentatively approve the recreation, Parks Recreation.
President Laflamme, Goff wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
That's okay.
I looked over. Sorry. We're going to go with Consor Goff. Go ahead. Sorry.
Leader of Recreation Art. Is that position open? Is that not filled?
That position is filled for the summer.
For the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we, we're going to take a motion.
Motion tentatively approved.
I'm going to second that. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Abstained.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to, we can go back now. The DBW Administration, page 101. You have the floor.
So salaries are contractual. We have currently one open position.
Liz, could you pull it down a little bit more? Unfortunately, they got to be able to hear.
On the salaries, it's contractual. We have one open position currently. On our expenses and general expenses. Everything is level funded with the exception of office equipment. Just the increased costs in having just things that you have to purchase, anything you have to replace in the office. We've been moving money around, so we're requesting an extra $1,500 in that line item.
That's it? Any questions? Consor Goff.
Line 571,000 on page 102 for travel, $7,500. Can you explain what that's used for?
So this covers easy pass for the entire city, I believe. We are responsible for all the transponders.
Thank you.
And as well as any travel related to training or conferences.
Thank you.
Consor Costello.
Thanks. The travel has been kind of an issue because if we're going to do any kind of cuts or anything, we're looking at travel because that's the least hurtful toward the residents. So the, the amount that you have here is, is that adequate? Or is, can you foresee any way that it could be cut? Or do you do out of state, we talked about out of state travel? So what we were looking for is that travel becomes necessary. But if it's not necessary, it's a hope that it's not, the trip isn't taken. Like say, for example, an out of state trip or whatever. What's your thought on that, on the travel and how we're looking at it to see if we can button that up a little bit?
When I talk about travel for training, it's not really out of state. Majority of this travel is within New England for training required for certain positions. As well as, you know, in the DPW admin, this budget also covers engineering. Engineering department doesn't have its own expense budget. This is part of their budget. So if an employee is using their own vehicle to, you know, similar to Parks, go to a job site, go do anything, go to training, which we, we take advantage of free training opportunities through Bay State roads. If they don't have a city vehicle available to them, they utilize their own vehicle and they put in for mileage. But the majority of this is for the easy pass for the city. So for all the city vehicles that have a transponder.
And all departments?
All departments, yes.
Thank you.
Consor Roy.
Yeah, Liz, could you just explain the street lighting? We're paying a quarter of a million dollars for street lighting?
That's all the city, all the streetlights in the right of way are covered through this line item. So all of your road, all the lights in the, in the road.
And everything goes through you?
Yeah.
Well, okay, thank you.
Consor Shamsky.
Thank you. Under the line janitor supplies, it went from $7,500 in 2024 and now it's down to zero the last two years. What is that about?
Got a year, a year and a half ago, well, last, actually last year was our first time facilities took over maintenance of ingenitorial services of the Baskin Drive property. So we no longer carry that line item. We also eliminated that position from our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions on Zoom? So I just want to make a comment about the traveling. I know it went up, the state requires that there's a percentage you give. I think it's 56 cents now or somewhere in that area. So I do see a lot of city people, employees using their personal cars to go a lot of places. So it's better than buying more vehicles and have them sitting around to have them available for these people. So in the long run, $7,500 is, is reasonable for the departments that you oversee, as we see. Plus all the responders that they go from here, they jump on the mass bike to get to there quicker than going through the cities. So it does get to be expensive a little bit. So I'm okay with that. Okay, any other comments on the administration? Any other comments? I'll take a motion tentatively approve.
Motion to tentatively approve.
Motion second to tentatively approve the DPW Administration. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll now go on to DBW, page 93, Engineering.
So engineering, as I mentioned earlier, the only, only budget, only items in this budget are salary. Everything is contractual. I do currently have three open positions that we have act, we are actively trying to fill.
Any questions on engineering? Consor Costello.
Yeah, in regards to the three open positions, how long have they been open?
One, one of them has been open for a little over a year and the other two have been open for, I believe, two years.
Okay, so it's been about, okay, so it's been about two years. So how many, how many engineers do you have now working?
With the exception of the city engineer, we have one other engineer right now. And under the admin budget, we also have an employee who came, who's part-time, that's also an engineer.
Okay, so you have your city engineer, another engineer and a part-time engineer.
Yes. And then we have a, the, it's called a junior engineering aide, but that person serves as our GIS coordinator for DPW.
Okay. Are we funding all the positions we've, we're funding right now?
As you guys know, we want more road projects to go out, but it's difficult to oversee those road projects when you don't have the staff. So we continue to actively fill these positions, especially the savings that the city benefits from when we don't have to hire outside consulting services to prepare those bid documents and plans. So.
Oh, that's great. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? I'd just like to make one comment. It's about the positions and the empty positions and that. You know, it's just like a project that we do throughout the city. You need to be shovel ready. Well, you better be ready if you can, you can find someone to hire, have that available because they're not going to wait a week to two, you lose them. I know that from business I used to work for, a couple of days, they're gone. They're looking because they got another opportunity. So I'm, I'm in favor of having these positions ready to go. We hear this, we're going to hear this for the next three nights about open positions. Believe me, they all wish they could be filled so that they can make all the city consulars happy in doing all these projects. But unfortunately, when you. But unfortunately, when you have twenty to thirty people out in all departments, it's a struggle and they're, and you know, they do it. And we look at their budget and, you know, um it was mentioned, you know, we get it late. But i- i- it's very rare, these comments that we're asking about, how come more money? That in the last, from twenty-four to twenty-five to twenty-six, it's very little in many of these uh departments. And so they, you know, the mayor and the departments met and uh they worked very hard at trying to eliminate stuff and and keep it down as much as possible. Yes, they're leaving some stuff in there. There's questions about, you know, two to three years uh been empty, but believe me, they wanna fill them. Um and so I'm in favor of leaving because hopefully uh there's people out there that wanna start working. So any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve engineer.
Motion to tentatively approve.
Motion made second to tenderly approve the engineering department. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Shamski.
Yes.
Labrie. Piniac Costello.
Yes.
And the engineering is tenderly approved. We'll move on to the flood control page one twenty. You have the floor.
So flood control salaries, sorry, um that is all contractual. We have currently one open position and and our, for expenses, um everything was level funded.
Thank you. Any questions from the floor? Any questions on Zoom? Um so Liz, where are we with the position uh that you're covering, uh helping assist down there, down at the, oh, it's not the flood control, it's the other one. I'll wait for that one. I apologize. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve the flood control. Motion made second that we tenderly approve the flood control. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Shamski.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
And a motion passes. We'll now move on to forestry page one seventeen. You have the floor.
So with salaries, this is all contractual. I currently have two open positions. With um our expenses also level funded.
Any comments from the floor? Consor Balakir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh Liz, uh page um one nineteen, forestry services, the amount of uh fifty thousand. Could you shed some light on that, please?
Uh this is the line item that we cover, the cost for northern tree services to come in when we um when the tree is outside of our capabilities. So, you know, if they have to bring in a crane uh because of the size of the tree or the proximity to any uh buildings, they may need to do with a crane, so that's where we take that from.
Okay, as a follow-up, thank you. Is is that adequate or would you just come back to the council to to get more money? Is that how you would handle that?
We've been making, doing well with the fifty thousand for a few years now. I think that's adequate. Um if there were more, a more extensive need, we would come back. But uh currently, I sp- you know, reviewing the budget with the tree warden, he felt that that was still appropriate.
Please, thank you.
Consor Costello.
Yes, thanks. Um so you're down two positions in forestry?
Yes.
Um how long have they not been filled?
Well, one of them is vacant due to a recent retirement. Um the other one, we haven't filled uh for some time. Um hopefully, one of our younger staff members is currently um working on acquiring their CDL license. Since once they do have that, they'd be able to uh apply for one of those positions. But it's a specialized um class of work, so plus it, there's a CDL license requirement, which is, I think every community around the state has been struggling to fill CDL license positions.
Consor Shamski.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh I have a question regarding the intern and co-op position. Have we filled that?
So that actually has served us well. One of our position, one of our current employees came from uh that co-op program. Uh we haven't, due to other um situations in the department with, you know, people on leave, um a medical and everything. We have to have, in order to take on a co-op, I have to have enough management level staff available. Um and because we've been short-staffed due to, not because of open, necessarily open positions, but just because of other um unforeseen situations, we didn't take on a co-op this year. But it's something that we would like to continue on. Um one of our wonderful uh newer employees, she's been with us for a year. She came from Smithfolk and it's been a great um resource utilizing the co-op.
So you mentioned something about CEOs and the licenses and all that, CDLs. Was it CEO or CD?
CEO.
Um are we going to be paying for training to do that, look for licensing? Or are we going to look into education to try to attract people?
We did prepare a program uh and negotiated it with the union. But um unfortunately, it relied on in-house staff to train um those that didn't, that needed to get their license. Um I do not have any interest from in-house staff. So the mayor and I are working on coming up with a plan to uh in the fu- future, near future, possibly create a part-time position that would just be for CDL training so that we can bring staff in at entry level, train them, get their CDL licenses, and then they can move into other positions.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom?
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Consor Roy, you did put your hand up. I'm sorry.
I did, but Mr. Shamski over there answered for me. Thank you.
Are you all set, sir?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve forestry department.
Motion to tentatively approve forestry.
Motion made second that we for uh tenderly approved the forestry department. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Shamski.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Thank you. It's the forestry is tenderly approved. We will now move on to highway page one oh four. You have the floor.
So um again, salaries are all contractual. I have a significant number of open positions. Um there was a change made um as an attempt to maybe make the pay a little bit more attractive. Um we, in the past, it seems like we've had more luck filling um six L grade positions versus five L grade positions with the CDL requirement. So with the approval of the mayor, we took four, five L positions and took that budget from those four and created three six L positions um to increase our s- number of six Ls from three to six, but reducing our five Ls from eight to four. Um so in hopes that in the next fiscal year, that maybe we'll have a little bit more success filling the six L positions versus the five L positions. It's kind of something that we're trying. Losing a position is never great, but right now, being so short-staffed, uh we're gonna try everything we can to be creative, to try to make it a little bit more attractive um to come in.
Just better.
Um and then with expenses, we, that's all level fund, level funded, sorry.
Any questions from the floor? Consor Ga- uh Costello and then Consor Balakir.
Thanks. Um so, so what's your um final figure for open positions for highway?
Let's see. Ten.
Ten?
Mm-hmm. I also have one tra- the traffic foreman position that's currently unfunded because rather than trying to fill that position with a licensed electrician, which in the pa- this has been unfunded for some time. Uh it was very difficult uh at the pay grade. And at that point, we created the electrician positions that are not in highway anymore. They fall under the admin contract and they're, the pay is divided between TPW admin, water and wastewater. And it's been a really great um change. They're highly utilized through all those departments.
Go ahead. You still have the phone.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um for the ten positions, um how long, cause how long have they been vacant?
Oh, God. Um I think everything went off the rails post-COVID uh when the Federal Motor Carriers Association changed the CDL requirement. In the past, before um CDL drivers, now, before they could, we could train them. They'd go take their tests and everything was all set. But now you have to go through a certified training program. Um and we were able to self-certify, but um when they changed that requirement, that it made it a lot more difficult. Cause we used to get um individuals in without CDL licenses and then they would learn how to drive CDL vehicles um on the job.
So it's, it's been a few years, basically.
Four years.
Four, yeah, four years. So basically because of the new requirements for this particular certification?
License.
License?
Yeah, could, the commercial driver's license.
Okay, thank you.
Consor Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh Liz, a question, uh two quick questions. First one, overtime, uh page one oh five, seventy-five thousand. Uh given the state of affairs regarding personnel, is that adequate? Or is that a figure and you're gonna try to work with it?
So it is adequate. Um of course, we do utilize a lot of overtime because of being so short-staffed. And while we are short-staffed, we have you moved monies over from sa- open salary line items. So we're comfortable leaving it at seventy-five. Um and hopefully, we'll fill more positions. Um but if we don't, we've been transferring it over.
Okay, thank you. Uh follow-up question. Uh the ROKA maintenance services, is is this an annual contract? Or is this, is this like a long-term contract? It seems that since twenty twenty-four, it's been a hundred thousand, twenty twenty-five is a hundred thousand, twenty twenty-six. It's on page one oh seven.
Yep.
So is this?
An annual contract. It's negotiated uh with ROKA. Um we actually, the value of the contract's actually a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but they cover that additional twenty-five with grant money that they receive. And so we've, we agreed at a hundred thousand every year and they've become an invaluable resource uh to fill in the gaps um wherever needed.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? Any question? Uh Consor Goff.
Um I have a question about street signs. Um I know the budget has not changed at thirty thousand, but I remember you coming back and asking for extra money for street signs. So is that thirty thousand now adequate?
It is. When I, we came back and asked for more money, it was to uh put up a significant number of signs around the food bank and on Westover Road. I don't know if you remember, it was quite a bit of signs. Um but we're comfortable with the current budget. I mean, unless we all of a sudden get a huge sign project, which I don't, I think that's not an uh a typical occurrence, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We're gonna make it so that we ha- we take one down in the ward, we'll put it back up in the ward. We all need a bigger budget. Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, we'll take a motion to tenderly approve the highway. Motion made second, we tenderly approve the highway budget. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Shamski. Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
And the, is tenderly approved. Now we'll move on to the sanitation page one oh eight. You have the floor.
So this one, again, so we have salaries, they're all contractual. We have approximately four positions open. Um and with our expenses, uh their general expenses, our level funded, our specials, we had to increase our hazardous waste collection because that's gone up a little bit. So we increased it by five thousand dollars for the year. So, you know, we host two household hazardous waste collection days. One in May and one in October. Um we utilize um uh it, they're owned by Republic, but I can't remember the name of the company, but it's Republic Waste Services. Um and so we, due to just the increased cost of disposing of these um wastes, you know? So it's gone up a little bit, but it's a great service that we provide. It's heavily utilized, so.
Consor Costello.
Thanks. Um so on sanitation, you're down to two positions?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Two. Four?
Yes, four.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, four.
Okay. Um is that because of the special license?
Uh we have one, I believe it's only one driver position open. So I would say we have one driver and one um foreman position open. I would say, um no, oddly enough, sanitation driver posi- positions are a little easier to fill than um highway or water or flood control or parks. I don't know why, but.
Good pickings.
Um I I just um, I I have to say they did a great job today. I mean, they're out there. I mean, can you, I mean, I know we're not supposed to compliment, but I'll tell you, we, you gotta, you gotta give them a lot of credit. I mean, it was ninety-eight degrees today and they did a great job. So.
Thank you.
Thank them for us.
I will.
That's an incredible, um I mean, not many people could do what they do. So thank them for us.
About that?
Yes.
Okay, who, someone over here, Consor Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh Liz, uh page one eleven, um just some clarification with the, regarding the dump caretaking. In twenty twenty-four, it was one point six million. Now it's one point eight million. Is, is this a a long-term contract or is this something that we go year to year?
So typically, there are three-year contracts for both trash, uh ha- household waste, MSW, municipal solid waste, and recycling. So this is all contractual. This is based on what our anticipated um disposal tonnage is um and based on the rate that is agreed upon in the contract.
So I'm sorry, so I just, this is a three-year contract?
So it's a three-year contract. We did, trash and recycling were off schedule by a year. We actually did just sign an agreement with Republic to go one year so that next year, we bid them both together and hopefully get better pricing because a lot of the companies that do trash also do recycling. So it may make it a little bit more um attractive to get both contracts where we would see better pricing.
All right, that's, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve the sanit-
Motion to tenderly approve.
Motion made second to tenderly approve the sanitation's budget. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Shamski.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll now move into central maintenance garage page ninety-four.
So um salaries, uh the only change here is we actually unfunded uh the intern co-op position. We're fully staffed and what we found when we did take on a co-op, that we- that we didn't actually have a career path for them. So a lot of these students are either second half year juniors or seniors. And, you know, they're looking for a job after they graduate from, from the program. And not being able to offer them that, it seemed like it didn't make sense to take on an intern co-op. And then we have some changes on our expenses. In general expenses, we have an increase for lubricants, just as you know, with inflation, the increased cost of lubricant, of any type of petroleum or grease or, you know, has gone up. And then under special services, as you know, we had to come back this year for additional funds. This budget was calculated based on, when we initially prepared the budget, was the first seven months of the fiscal year. And so we kind of took a monthly average to calculate an annual cost. It's just fixing equipment, parts, all that stuff is just much more expensive now. And so seeing as that central maintenance maintains all the city vehicles with the exception of fire and ambulance, so it's just been a need. And it was underfunded for the last two fiscal years. We've had to transfer money. So this year, we decided like it's appropriate versus having to continue to come back to council.
Any questions from the floor? Consul Goff.
I see under motor equipment and repairmen, you have seven positions. Is that a typo?
What's that? Sorry, what's that?
Five, one, four, one, two, zero, page ninety-four.
Yes, we have, yeah, seven positions. We're all, we're fully staffed in central maintenance.
Thank you.
Any other question for four? Let's just make a comment. So the central maintenance takes care of every vehicle in the city other than the fire department. All vehicles, DPW, police, fire, city administration, all of it.
Schools. School, schools.
So they.
Plainsville.
Yeah, when you have, when you have cruisers, you know, thirty cruisers and all this stuff, there's a lot of work involved.
A lot of vehicles, a lot of.
Okay, any other comments from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve the-
Motion to tenderly approve.
Motion made secondly, approve the central maintenance garage. ROKA.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampitz?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
And the motion passed to tenderly approve the central maintenance garage. We'll now move on to page 171, water department.
So in water, salaries are all contractual. We have a significant number of open positions, again, related to CDL licensing on the labor side. We also have a couple of administrative positions that are not so simple to fill. Then for general expenses, it's level funded with the exception, a small decrease due to insurance premiums. I guess they went down.
Any questions from the floor?
And then, oh, and then special ser, special service, our specials accounts. That's gone up due to MWRAs rate going up, so source of supply increased. The admin local share, which is what the water department gives for their portion of this operations at City Hall. Some Medicare has gone up. Yeah, that's it.
Any questions? Consul Balak here.
Yeah, thank you. Liz, page 173, overtime, a hundred fifty thousand. Would you say this is attributable to personnel issues? Is that what you would say it is?
We, unfortunately, you know, a lot of our water main breaks, service leaks happen in overtime. And also, you know, having to cover, do maintenance outside of normal business hours due to limited staffing, so.
Okay, thank you. The other question is, you alluded to the source of supply. It's gone up two hundred seventy-five thousand in two years. How long is this contract? Is this, again, is this an annual or is this like a three or five-year contract?
Sharon, is this? It's like twenty years, is it twenty years? I think it's a twenty-year contract.
I have a big mouth. I thought everybody could hear me. I think it is twenty years, but didn't we just do a new one recently?
Yes, and their rates just went up.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right, thank you.
And there's also like a cost share as far as for the city. When they do any upgrades to quabbin for their equipment.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve the water department.
Motion to tenderly approve.
Motion made secondly, we tenderly approve the water department's budget. ROKA.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampitz?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Thank you. And the water department is tenderly approved. Water bonds and interest.
This is all, you know, our loans, our debt obligations. We took on some more debt due to water main replacement projects.
Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve the-
You tendatively approve water bonds.
Motion made secondly, we tendatively approve the water bonds and interest. ROKA, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampitz?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
The water bond and interest be approved. We'll now move on to page 153, sewer, public utilities and public, and public utilities. One fifty-three, go ahead.
Salaries, all contractual. We have a few open positions and actually a few more due to retirements. Actually, maybe that's not in this one. This one, that might fall under pre-treatment. So we have three, four, five open positions. And then with general expenses. This has gone up significantly. As you recall, throughout the fiscal year, we had to do transfers of funds to cover increased costs, costs of chemicals and just laboratory testing. We also are requesting increase in special repairs due to just the increased cost in parts to repair equipment that we have that's aging as well as departmental equipment. This is utilized to cover the costs of new pumps or what's needed. We do have a few pumps that are requiring replacement. One is our bisulfite pump, which dechlorinates the effluent after it's been chlorinated. So you have to dechlorinate it for it to be safe for aquatic life. And we also have a CSO pump that needs replacement. And so we're trying to kind of manage that fiscally by incorporating what we can into the budget without significantly impacting it based on the rate.
Any questions from the floor? Consul Costello.
Thanks. On, looks like temporary labor in 2024, there was forty-three thousand and now there's nothing requested. Can you highlight that a little bit?
So due to the financial constraints on the wastewater, on the public utility, on wastewater specifically, we have to, have to be creative to kind of minimize the budget as best as we can. The last few years, with all of the failures of equipment at the plant, we had to significantly deplete our fund balance account. And at the close, or prior to the close of last fiscal year, there was only like fifty-six thousand dollars. And so fortunately, we did close out last fiscal year. I had to put a hiring freeze. We had to absorb some salary money. And then we started this fiscal year with a little, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand, something around. But still not a very comfortable place to be. We really should have around a million dollars in our fund balance account in case we have an unanticipated major failure. So this last fiscal year, I imposed a hiring freeze because of that. I needed to conserve budget, salary budget as much as possible. So throughout the fiscal year, you saw we were transferring a lot of salary money. So we were conserving that fund balance account. And although at the end of the fiscal year, we still had to move some of that monies out. President Laflamme had mentioned a little too premature in another budget. I've been filling the role of the chief operator, managing the day-to-day operations at the plant, offering guidance and troubleshooting. I, I may not be a licensed operator, but as an engineer, my background, I have a lot of knowledge in how the plant functions. And so in order to conserve money, I didn't fill that position at all. So that saved over a hundred thousand dollars, right? Although I can't do it forever, but it helped during this year. So when it comes to temporary labor, we've been utilizing ROKA to help with some of that. And just offering overtime to help conserve some of that salary money. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you for taking on another job. You know, we appreciate the, your conscientious efforts here. You know, that's nice. And thank you for using ROKA as much as you do too, because we're always looking at trying to save money and, and as a department head, you're trying to help us. Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, we'll move on to, I'm sorry, oh, Consul Balak here.
Yeah, thank you. Liz, thanks. On page 158, there's an item here which is interesting. There are special accounts, admin, local share. It looks like this went from zero in 2025 to two hundred sixty-four thousand.
So last year, with the support of the mayor and Sharon Otter, the city waived that fee. So the admin local share is, you know, for sewer and water to be kind of independent, you know, we, we collect revenue through rates. So this is our share of the operations at City Hall, whether it's, you know, payroll, all the contract administration that happens through City Hall. All of that has to, there's a portion of that that is our responsibility. Last year, because of our financial struggles, that was waived for one year. This year, it's coming back. So that's why it went from zero to two hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Okay, thank you. So then it's, it's back on the books, in other words. Okay, all right, an accounting situation. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? Any questions? So on the same topic, so it's a mission local share. How many people is that? Is that several people? Is that one person? What does it do?
It pays for City Hall's operations. So like auditing handles, review of payroll, contracts, purchasing administers, our bids.
Okay, so it's-
HR handles our hiring, all of that.
I got it. So it muddies the law department, bringing it into this side.
Yes. So it's our portion of-
To pay your bills. Thank you. Any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll make, take a motion to tenderly approve the sewer public utilities.
Motion to tenderly approve.
Motion made secondly, to sewer, public utilities and public utilities. ROKA, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampitz?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Thank you. And yet that one is tenderly approved. We'll go to the collection systems, one sixty-one.
So collection systems, salaries are contractual. I currently have one open position that we held back filling last year to conserve funds to pay for needed equipment. And then expenses, level funded.
Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve. Motion made secondly, we tend to approve the collection system budget. ROKA.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks? Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampitz?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Consul Brooks out of here.
Yes.
He's back. Okay. Consul Brooks said yes. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to pre-treatment, page 159.
So again, salaries are contractual. I currently do have two open positions due to retirement. One retired in April and one retired in May. And fortunate for us, they are going to come back as part-time employees until we are able to fill those. So to help with our compliance permitting, reporting, which we do on a monthly basis, all of our lab testing, training the staff to take on additional responsibilities in their absence.
Thank you. Any questions from the floor? Consul Balak, Balak here.
General expenses are level funded.
Yeah, thank you. So Liz, that would explain why the salaries went down. Because they're coming back at, at reduced salaries, correct?
Right, yes. Because when contractually, instead of starting, where they finished off at the top step, right there, when we hire somebody, they'll start at a lower step, so.
Okay, no, that's great because I, I did see that. So I said, this, this looks interesting. So that's, I, I just wanted clarification. So thank you. All set.
Thank you.
I see there's no longevity for two, twenty twenty-six from you that are zeroed out.
Yes. Well, because the only current employee is a clerk and she just started in January, so she doesn't-
Wow, that's my point. A lot of new people. Okay, any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tenderly approve.
Tendatively approve.
Motion made secondly, tend to approve the pre-treatment. ROKA, please.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampitz?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
And the motion is tenderly approved. Okay, we'll go to combined sewer overflow, page 164.
So this department, salaries, all contractual. I do have two open positions. General expenses, level funded. Our specials went up and that's for the SRF admin fees, which is our SRF loan admin fees.
Thank you. Any- Thank you. Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to combine sewer overflow.
Motion to tentatively approve.
Motion made secondly, that the combined sewer overflow, the tentatively approved. Roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Shamski?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
And the combined sewer overflow is tentatively approved. We'll move on to sewer bonds and interest, page six seven and one sixty-nine.
So this is our debt service, our obligations. It has gone up due to the sewer separation project in the South Fairview area. It'll, it's gonna go up more, uh, but for the reason it's not as high this first year is because we were, fortunately, a, a lot of ARPA money was applied towards this project, so we actually didn't start pulling from the loans until recently, so next year it'll go up, but again, but yes.
Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to tentatively approve.
Motion to tentatively approve.
Motion made secondly, we temporarily a- approve the sewer bond and interest. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff? Balakir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Shamski?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
And the sewer bonds and interest is tentatively approved.
Motion adjourned?
Motion made second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?